Good evening. Welcome to another episode of Malden Talks. Tonight, I'm at the John and Christina Markey Senior Center in Malden Center. And we're gonna have the last, if not the next-to-last school committee meeting of the season. And a lot of interesting topics gonna come up on tonight's agenda. One of them's gonna be vote on Unit A teacher's contract. Vote on whether to enroll Pope John International students. A decision on employees' child attending Malden Public Schools. The naming of a Marguerite Gonzalez studio. Some sort of vote concerning the Linden Steam Academy governing board. And a motion to adopt paper straws. Pretty much after that, it's gonna be personal privilege and executive sessions. Myself, and probably a whole lot of the parents in town, are waiting to see how this turns out and what happens tonight. What happens tonight could have a bit of an impact on the Linden going forward. And it's a subject that I'm acutely attuned to and interests me greatly. Hope to see everybody online, hope to see everybody this year. Thank you.
And the agenda is as follows. First, following to pledge allegiance to our flag, we'll then have a moment of silence. For those who have fought for our country, we will then have public comment. We're then going to hear from our superintendent on what's happening in the district. Item number four is on subcommittee reports and discussions. Number five is motions and resolutions. Within that category, we have potential vote on the teacher's contract, Unit A. We also have a potential vote on the possibility of enrolling Pope John students. There's another question about employees' children attending the Malden Public Schools. We also have the proposed naming of the Marguerite Gonzalez studio. We're then also gonna talk about the future of the Linden Steam Academy governing board. And then finally, under motions and resolutions, there's an item about the adoption of paper straws. After that, we're gonna get to a personal privilege. We're going to take a vote to go into executive session for two purposes. One is on collective bargaining with Units A, B, and C. Again, Unit A we made dispensary with earlier on, we'll see. And then the other item is around litigation. And then when we come back out, we may take potential votes on those items. And then we will move to recess, subject to the call of Chair. So if there aren't any questions, I would ask the school committee and everybody here, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. Thank you. We're now going to have our clerk call a vote to ensure that we have a form sufficient to meet this evening.
Name, please, Mr.?
Here.
Ms. Biese, here. Ms. Borner, Mr. Droney, Mr. Troyer.
Here.
Ms. Ayavino.
Here.
Ms. Leo.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Spatafor.
Here.
Mr. Henning-McCarth.
Here.
All right, so we have a form sufficient to meet. Let's first take up approval of the minutes from June 3rd, 2019. Motion by Mr. Ayavino, second by Mr. McCarthy. So everybody's had a chance to review those, and any questions, queries, qualms? Hearing none? All of us are paid to say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes from June 3rd, 2019 are adopted unanimously. Now, if there be no objection, before we get to public comment, I want the superintendent to speak a little bit to what happened during last week's public meeting at the Salemwood School. First, I want to thank all of you for either being in attendance or calling or emailing us to express your interest and your support of trying to come up with a solution. So tonight, our superintendent is going to provide some options that we're going to further discuss with parents impacted at a meeting that's set for Monday, July 15th, at 6:00 in the Salemwood School cafeteria. I want to first, before I turn it over to our superintendent, just to talk about some of the parameters about what we're thinking of to try to keep after-school programming intact for our 7th and 8th graders. I want to thank him, as well as our budget director, Tony Mertz, and our chief of staff, Ray Luis, and the mayor's office for trying to, you know, come up with something really out of nothing because of what we heard last week. So, you know, I'll just end by thanking the parents and the caretakers and everybody else that came out to that public meeting last week. It was very helpful for us, and we thought some of the suggestions that were made, we're going to incorporate some of them into what our superintendent's going to present momentarily. Now, they're not perfect, but I think it at least, you know, gets us to a place that I think we all want to be come September. So without further ado, let's have our superintendent, you know, let us know what, you know, the game plan is moving forward.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We held a meeting last Wednesday, June 26th, at Salemwood School, and we heard from many people regarding the 7th and 8th grade after-school program. And we would like to announce that we have an option that we're going to roll out, available to our families for the fall. If we can maintain a minimum amount of students, which currently is 68, we will be able to offer some after-school programming for our 7th and 8th graders for a fee of $10 a day. That would be for $3.75 up to 6:00 p.m. It would be available with the 4K-8 schools, BB, Forest Dale, Linden, and Salemwood. We anticipate potentially Salemwood may have more students than last year, given the loss of the extended learning time. So we're optimistic that this will be helpful to our families that have been impacted. As we said, 7th, 8th grade tends to be a precipitous drop-off in our enrollment in those programs, but we'll hopefully be able to continue with at least that enrollment that we have and offer that programming. As the mayor said, we'll be hosting another public forum two weeks from today, on July 15th, 6:00 p.m., again at the Salemwood School, to further discuss the upcoming after-school programming, the registration, and the 21st Century Grant that we were not eligible for for this upcoming year, and we'll explain the details of that on that night. In addition, we will be sending out some notices and letters to families, our rising 7th and 8th grade families, informing them of the options and the new programming that we hope to maintain. As many families said, they just need their kids to be in the school and doing some homework and kept safe. So we've heard that, and we're hopefully gonna be able to roll that out. And I want to thank the mayor and his staff for allowing us to really vet this and try to come up with something, because we understand families are hurting, you know, and hopefully at this early date, we can address that and allay some of those fears they have coming into this upcoming August.
Okay, so now, before we get to the rest of the agenda, are there any immediate questions about where we're hoping to go? The key here is around enrollment. So we're basing this on roughly 77th and 8th graders participating. Now, if that is not the case, you know, we're gonna have to go back and amend the plan. But if we can get roughly, you know, 68 to 70 students participating, then we think this will be neutral, you know, cost-neutral to the budget. And again, the 68 doesn't have to be divided evenly by the four schools. It could be 10 here, 20 there. So long as enrollment gets to that figure, that will not impact us negatively on the budget overall.
And just to also re-mess that, you've overlooked this. It would be a Monday through Thursday program. We also found that the 7th and 8th grade, we had a tremendous amount of kids that were not going on those Fridays as well, so we're looking at that Monday through Thursday.
All right, Ms. Did you have a question, Ms. Spatsley?
I did. I'm just, I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering then if this could be settled with the 68, why wasn't this thought of in the beginning? Why was this, why was it just immediately cut?
Well, I think the superintendent mentioned at the public meeting that it was just something that, you know, he said that it was botched, and now we're trying to make it right. So I don't want to speak abuse of the superintendent.
Yeah, I think we were also looking at with extremely low-cost figure that we had. We weren't expecting additional enrollment if we had raised the rates, but hearing what we did, I think we responded with what we heard from a number of families that really needed this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and that was one of the first things, Ms. Spatsley, that the superintendent mentioned at the meeting. If it could be done over again, it would have been done differently. But now we're just trying to move the ball forward, and, you know, we'll see. Based on the letter, that'll go out the next day or so, next couple of days, plus this public meeting. Hopefully, we'll be in a position, you know, to have registration available, you know, a month, month, maybe a week or two, month and a half prior to school starting, and see where we can, see if we can meet these estimates.
What I've found is that parents are very resourceful, and that if we were to give these six, two parents before we make these decisions, that would be better.
Yep, we agree. That's how all of us, and lesson learned. Ms. Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question for you, Superintendent. When we, you just mentioned that you're gonna be sending out an announcement, and I just wanted to reiterate, because of our diverse student body, that this announcement will go out in numerous languages, like your previous announcement last week on regards to the parking lot, which was fantastic. So I just want to make sure that we're getting across to the entire student body and parents of our community.
Yes, so we're gonna try to do all of our, the ones that come from the central office in the six languages plus English as many times as we can. I'm also looking at exploring the use of our connected tool to do that interpretation in more than these languages, and we have a meeting set up tomorrow, and try to explore that, if it has that capacity to do it, which we think it does. We just need to know what our, if our interface is correct.
Yeah.
Technical stuff, it's all in my head, but we're looking at that going forward as well.
Okay, and when can we expect that?
This announcement?
That we have to the meeting on the 15th?
Uh, we're gonna do something, not, I'm sorry, expect, what?
So we're gonna do an announcement for the meeting on the 15th, and then whatever comes out of that meeting, again, we're gonna also relay that in multiple languages.
Yes, 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 all these will be, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if you could help us, you know, get the word out, I think the superintendent will have a letter drafted, you know, much like last time, explaining this proposed change, and if you could help us get it out to the school community. Again, this is an effort to try to, you know, get us to where the families were talking about last Wednesday. Now, it's not perfect. I mean, this is, you know, it's gonna require an adjustment on our families' end for sure. But this proposal will be neutral to our budget, which has already been adopted, and will provide, you know, after-school programming Monday through Thursday up until, is it 6? 6:00?
That's correct.
You know, like it's A. So, you know, I think we're in a much better place than we were, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And again, that's testament to Ms. Luis and the mayor's office, superintendent Otero, and our budget director, Tony Mertz. So if there's no other questions, do you have one more, Ms. Spatafor?
Yeah, and just for clarification for anybody watching or sitting in the audience, we indicated the four schools being Linden, Forest Dale, Salemwood, and BB, and that's because Ferryway has their own program. So just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that without mentioning Ferryway, parents don't get nervous, like, how come Ferryway's not included? But that's because they're running through the WCA, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Now, before we get to public comment, I just want to take out of order, if there's no objection, the naming of the Marguerite Gonzalez studio. And that's because Mr. Valente was the first person here, so Mr. Valente, why don't you step forward? And let's see if there's any, I think there's first gonna be a committee report, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so why don't we, let's get the committee report from Mr. Ayavino first, and then we'll see if there's any questions based on the report, and then potential vote thereafter. So, Mr. Ayavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been asked to deliver this report by Ms. Gordon Arro, who's chair of the policy subcommittee. I've been asked to do this in her absence. And at the policy subcommittee, the issue of naming the studio after Mrs. Gonzalez was greeted with unanimous consent. And well-deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well-deserved.
Appreciate it.
All right, so are there any questions? Last-minute questions for Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's just, I've known Marguerite for, Miss Gonzalez, for a very, very long time. She's really the proponent to get that studio up and running at the high school, so outstanding. So, that's all I have, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. So, Mr. Valente, tell us if the vote goes the way I think it will. What would be the next steps? What are you thinking of a dedication?
Well, we'd like, obviously, to wait till the school is open in session. We'd like to have Marguerite, obviously, present and her family, if they'd be willing to come out, and obviously yourself and any of the other folks that were involved.
Okay.
Make sure that the studio, you know, is built and, obviously, constructed and up and running, and we'd like to do a ribbon-cutting at some point, probably early September, if not late September, at, you know, at the convenience of the committee would like to meet there, and so forth.
Great. All right, so there you have it. We have a motion by Mr. Ayavino, there is a second, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any other questions, queries, qualms, concerns? Normally, we'd say vote call, then, not for Miss Gonzalez. All's a pay to say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it? Carrying unanimous?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, now, let's get back to our regular agenda. So we took care of the minutes, we're now at item number two, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the school committee can do so now. We just ask you to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your remarks to just a couple of points. Maybe we need to do more meetings in the summer.
Hello.
Good evening.
Jackie Iker, to Forest Dale, sort of, basically, 6th grader. I wanted to address something that we had when, prior to, Mr. Otero is joining us as superintendent, when Dr. Grantson was our superintendent, we had a group called FACE, which I believe stood for Family and Community Engagement. And we met under his guidance, I believe, once a month. Mary, you were there, if that sounds right. I personally am a little frustrated with the lack of, I feel like that right now, things tend to be a little top-down instead of collaborative, and the cancellation of the 7th and 8th grade after-school program kind of brought that to, made that an even bigger obvious thing, because I feel like Mr. Otero, you were pretty surprised by the fact that so many people were upset that this was changing. But if there had been some communication with the parents, you know, back and forth, you might have known a little bit more before anything had to result in all these summer meetings and mea culpa's and things like that. So I don't know if you'd be interested in organizing another family and community engagement group, but we're a really nice group of parents, and we really do want the best for our kids. And I know, when you first came, we wanted to give you a chance to get settled, you know, a couple of us had actually broached the subject to you. I think a lot of us would really like to see stuff like that occurring again. So if you could just kind of keep that in mind, I think we'd really appreciate it, and I think it would actually make some more, it would make MPS just a more collaborative culture, where we can engage in some positive change and not be blindsided by changes, you know, on either side of the aisle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. Good evening.
Good evening. Bonne nuit, little John, old street of Malden. I just wanted to just state, despite this last lack of communication, that, to Mr. Otero, that I have, in the past two years that he's been superintendent, I have appreciated all his communications with the parents. I know this one last thing, and he admitted, you know, he made a mistake, but I would say I have appreciated everything he's done with communications. I think his communications for the past two years have been wonderful, so I just wanted to state that, despite this last.
Thank you, okay. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. Okay, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting, and now we'll hear from our superintendent on what's happening in the district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to let everyone know that last week, we were on a conference call, webinar, with the Department of Education. School committee member Spatafor was present as well for the Influence 100 Grant. We applied for the Influence 100 Grant through the Department of Education. They're launching this initiative to increase racial and ethnic diversity in superintendents in Massachusetts, create more culturally responsive districts and leaders across the state, and promote better outcomes for students. The Influence 100 Grant includes a fellowship program for qualified educators who desire to move into the superintendent role the next five years, and support our school districts and become more culturally responsive, and diversify the educated workforce. This is a major initiative with the department. It's also a platform which we're embracing as well. So last Monday, Ms. Spatafor, along with Dr. Chase and myself, met online with Dr. Cheryl Cammaggio from the Department of Education. They were very positive, and they will formally announce that we will be in the program by July 5th, but gave us very strong assurances that we'll be likely be selected. We're excited to work with the department on this initiative, which complements the district's commitment to equity and inclusion. One of the things that was mentioned, that they're looking for, the school committee to become, I think, involved and active, and take a stance around following some goals and guidelines on diversity within our own district, which many districts are doing. So I think that's something to sort of put on the school committee's ready archive going forward. I want to thank Ms. Spatafor for taking time to be there, that requested that a school committee member be present, to show the district's deep commitment to this, so thank you very much. And we're very optimistic that we'll get this. I have good news, and we will send this out in the coming days to our families. The Sherwood Project is through the Tufts University School of Medicine, and they are once again organizing free school physicals. These are events hosted and coordinated by students of Tufts University School of Medicine, and it's open to any K-8 student in Malden that can receive a complete evaluation and physical exam from a licensed physician for the purposes of participating in school. These are free, as a service to the community. They are happy to provide documentation of the physical for each student. The physicals will be right next door at St. Paul's Parish, 26 Washington Street, from 8:30 to 12:30 p.m. on Saturday, July 20th, Saturday, August 10th, and Saturday, September 7th. I will get this out. I've notified the parent information center for upcoming registrations. We will be sending this out on connected, posting it on our website, and I've already mentioned it to our athletic department, which often, we have students who are scrambling at the last minute after a physical, and also with our parent information center. So this will be going out, it's a great thing. If they reach capacity, they will, on these dates, they'll be doing them the following Tuesday afternoon at 6:00 p.m., but that would be, you know, you'd be notified that day there. Another partnership through the Department of Ed is with Boston College. EDAM superintendent, Dr. Dan Guttenkamp's advisors, PhD programs at BC's doctoral program, Lynch School. He works and coordinates these with the Department of Ed, and Desi strongly recommended that he contact Malden Public Schools at the place where his interns can do their study in data collection. Specifically, they recommended us for our diversity and inclusive practices in special education. They wish to study a district that's had positive things going on relative to inclusion practices for students. After a lot of discussion, the Department of Ed, in conducting their personal research, strongly recommended Malden Public Schools for a period of time for their study this fall. They believe that our district has some promising practices that support special education students, students with trauma, English learners, and refugee students. These students would be interning only and gathering data. Michael Wood, our assistant superintendent for Student Services and Special Education, is familiar with the program, he would be working with them, but they are really there for data collection, doing their dissertation. They do not mention the district by name as part of the policy, and they only highlight positive things. This is not an audit or a gotcha or anything that comes back negatively on the district, so we're excited, and this work will begin in the fall. The last two weeks in Malden, I've deemed Malden University as, from June 17th to 27th, we had an array of professional development opportunities throughout the district, including, but not inclusive of, Writing with Colours, Google Training, Technology Training, Project-Based Learning from the Buck Institute, Project Slice, Literacy Training, Footsteps to Brilliance, the Boston Writing Program, and Social Emotional Training, to list just a few. Our training and culturally responsive educators will be rescheduled to the fall. That was with Dr. Darnisa Amonte through the Harvard Rides Program. We did not have a solid representation of our staff for this due to some scheduling issues, and also she had some conflict upcoming through her Harvard program. So when we're rescheduling this to the fall, we will get a much better response and roll this training up. She feels that that would be probably the better end to do it on, so that will be coming right when school ramps up. Last week, we sent nine staff educators out to Colorado, once again through the Bar Foundation. They left on Tuesday and returned Saturday. They went from dawn to dusk, learning everything from project-based learning, engagement, relevance, and overall redesigning of a high school. That's part of what our Bar Foundation grant is doing. They had an incredible time, and we can report out on that in the fall, but they were very impressed, and I think worked extremely hard. Upcoming changes this year that we think will be positive for our families. We are doing kindergarten pre-screening over the summer, which we are very happy about. We're trying something new with our kindergarten screening. The effort was spearheaded by assistant superintendent, Dr. Chase, and we'll have kindergarten teachers working with PIC manager, Ms. Joan Federico, to do as much kindergarten screening before the school year begins. While we still have kindergarten orientation screening, during the first days of the school calendar, we'll schedule interested families for screening, that they can cross one more thing off their list as they get ready for kindergarten. Once we pilot this initiative, this summer, we'll work with teachers to gather feedback to see how it went, and how we can move forward with the next steps. On our end, the screening during the summer helps teachers and administrators create balanced classes and avoid transitions once the school year has begun. Ms. Federico and the PIC staff will be calling kindergarten families to offer summer screening. We'll be scheduling times throughout the summer. For families out there listening tonight, the screening takes about 30 minutes. So we're very happy to announce that project. We've put some time into it over the year, and we're excited. The extended learning time vote happened at the two schools, Ferryway and the Salemwood, on Friday, June 14th. Each year, in order to apply for the extended learning time grant through the state, a vote of the faculty in the respective schools is required. The Ferryway faculty voted to continue to participate in the ELT program. The Salemwood School voted to not participate. At the inception of the program in 2006/7, the faculty was compensated at a rate of 18% above their base salary. However, due to level funding of the program over the years by the state, a deficit was created, which the school department has had to fund. The school committee has always held the position that the ELT grant had to be self-sustaining and not come out of the operating budget, which would ultimately affect other schools. For the last several years, the rate has been negotiated at the 16% through the Malden Education Association. Even at the 16% rate, the school department was funding a deficit of $80,000. This year, in order to accommodate raises and additional staffing, a 15% salary compensation was negotiated by the MEA and the school department, which was then put to the vote to its members. Even at this rate, the deficit would still be over $100,000. We realize this would be a great change for the Salem Wood community. We will assess other options to help students and families. As we move forward, we will be in communication so that everyone is updated, and I know Ms. Van Don at the Salem Wood is preparing a letter with new start times and some of the options that would accompany that. At that meeting on June 26th at the Salem Wood, we did address some questions regarding the cessation of that ELT program as well as changes in our after-school program. School Works, it's the consulting group that we've enlisted to do an analysis of our administrative structure with some recommendations going forward. They will begin meeting with our admin team over the summer and early fall, and so that they can best understand job roles and responsibilities, and hopefully come out with a report recommendation sometime this fall. Along those lines, our district improvement plan, our vision and mission statement preparation is in the very capable hands of Dr. Lori Likens, our consultant on the district improvement plan. She continues to work with, right now, our admin team. We'll be spreading that net wider come late August with stakeholders, including parents, students, and community members as well as civic leaders. That will hopefully continue late August. You'll return back for that work. Need to announce a fee rate increase with our rental of the schools, the custodial due to contractual obligations. The rental rates of the custodial has gone from $40 an hour to $45 an hour beginning July 1st. I do have some new administrative appointments that I am very pleased to announce. First, Mr. Ray Garcia will be the permanent principal of the Linden Steam Academy. He's been the interim since March, and he's done a tremendous job in stabilizing the school and is ready to bring the Linden Steam Academy to the next level. Staff, students, and family have expressed the ultimate praise for Mr. Garcia and feel that his four months as the interim, interim rather, have demonstrated he's clearly the best choice to lead the Linden Steam Academy. Also like to welcome Mr. Greg Hurley, who will be the new humanities director, replacing departing Sean Walsh. Greg is a veteran educator and leader in the Malden High School Social Studies Department, and is ready to take over from Mr. Walsh, who did a tremendous job in his brief time as the humanities director. Mr. Walsh left to take a position where he resides in Andover. We're grateful for the terrific work Sean performed with us and wish him all the best. Greg has been a Malden Public School employee since 2005 and has been leading many projects within the humanities realm. We're excited to have Mr. Hurley on board. If you could stand up while we're sitting down, he's probably as tall as I am. Like to introduce Ms. Erin Craven, who's the new director of guidance for the Malden Public Schools. She is a veteran counselor who's been with our staff since 2006. She's been involved most recently and deeply with the Bar Foundation and has overseen the transition program from the eighth to ninth grade, which highlights a lot of the work the Bar Foundation does and where our guidance needs are. One of the things that we found out going through the work with the Bar Foundation is that we were in dire needs of a guidance director, and Erin is incredibly strong leader, a visionary, and we are very confident and capable. We feel that the department will be in her capable hands, so welcome Erin Craven. And lastly, but not least, I'd like to welcome Dr. Carrie Anne Murphy as the new principal of BB School. She started today. Dr. Murphy? As I think I had stated in our release, Dr. Murphy comes to us. She began her teaching career in Malden as a student teacher and had gone over to Chelsea and became a STEM director, and most recently, the last couple of years in Winthrop as an assistant principal. We're really excited to have her on board. She's done some transition work with Barbara O'Brien, the outgoing principal, and I would like to publicly acknowledge Ms. O'Brien for the incredible work she's done over the last year and a half as the interim principal of the BB School. The amount of knowledge and insight and wisdom that she has imparted to our students and staff has been immeasurable. She has been an incredible guide for us. I feel that the work she's done, I don't think we can overstate it. She really took over the school and I think reoriented into a growth mindset, one that was very student-centered, and I think that we, she has pushed, put the school in a direction where Dr. Murphy can, I think, continue with the great work that she's done. So congratulations to Dr. Murphy, but thank you very much to Barbara O'Brien. And just lastly, and a couple of things, the last couple of weeks, we had all the K-8s and ELCs had the moving on ceremonies. They were terrific. We look forward to those again next year. Our last day of school was Friday, June 14th, so we did have that, as I called in, Malden University starting the following Monday. I also wanted to note on June 19th, the City of Malden celebrated Juneteenth Day here at the Senior Center. There was a flag raising ceremony in the morning, and then a public dinner and cultural celebration at night. And we are also placing on our Malden Public School holiday celebration calendar that includes a number of culturally responsive and religious holidays that are often not thought of. We're putting June 19th on there for next year going forward. Just summer, just a few updates. Although school is out, there are many programs running out of schools for the students. They're housed this year at the Ferryway and Forestale Schools, as the Salem Wood and BB are both offline. The Summer Needs Program is available in the parks throughout the city since June 8th, so children who are not attending summer school are welcome to head to the parks to get a free lunch. And lastly, the Malden High School Robotics Team will be flying to Oklahoma on Saturday, July 6th, and returning July 12th, hopefully with the international championship. They were able to raise enough funding through the GoFundMe page and some generous donors out there, as well as the Malden High School Alumni Association, so we wish them the best of luck this upcoming weekend. I'll keep folks posted through Twitter as I get those from the two coaches, Baz and Nadie, and Mr. Morrison. And that concludes my report for today.
All right, let's take some questions from the members. Ms. Bietzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions. First, with the equity inclusion, this stance and guidelines, are we going to come up with some other measurable goals for us to work on in that? Like if you're talking about equity inclusion, are you going to, are there going to be specific goals as far as like what we're going to be measuring, what we're going to be?
For the grant?
Like once we, I guess, implement it?
Well, I think what they were saying is that the school committee, part of the goal-setting, should develop some, some goals and guidelines, you know. But I don't know if the grant itself includes that, but I think what they prefer, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Spatafor, is that it augments the district commitment if the school committee sort of says that we, you know, place a premium on diversity and, you know, inclusion and equity within our school district, you know, and I think that that's something that would be a natural segue for this district, being as diverse as it is and embracing that type of work.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so secondly, with the inclusion practices, that's great that they're getting the data collection. What are we going to do with the data? Like, are we going to get it? Are we going to use that as a?
We're hoping that we can benefit from that. Again, they're not here to do an analysis per se to compare us, but I think that one of the benefits we may get out of this is that they can, you know, sometimes highlight things that we might overlook or take for granted, or, you know, maybe what they uncover through some of this would suggest that we need to deploy resources in a different manner.
Correct. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And then as far as kind of, thank you so much for doing that for the kindergarten. I know a lot of school districts, like, and a lot of parents, I've worked with working families have a really hard time starting later, and I know you guys know that, and if we could somehow work towards getting, so that we could get kids starting at the same time, I think it would, you know, kindergarten starting at the same time mother and father start, because it's like a week later, correct?
About three days, maybe? Two or three? Two days.
That would be something to, I think. Thank you.
Ms. Spatafor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick questions. The first one, on the, the free physicals being offered, that's just physicals alone, is it? Do you know about vaccinations? I think that would be really helpful for our kindergarten.
I don't actually know. They were supposed to send me a flyer. I asked for that, and I haven't heard back. I, I, I don't know. That's one of the questions I have for them, and I haven't heard back.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great if you could circulate that, once you get that additional information.
I, I thought somebody told me they did in the past, but I wouldn't, I don't publicly want to commit to that.
Sure. Most definitely. My second question is, with the kind of ELT at Salem Wood, what are we doing right now in the summer to ensure that our special needs students that have IEPs are being amended to reflect the change in times? Because a lot of these are based on times, you know, 30 minutes ago with this person, so on and so forth. So before we start the school year, we have to make sure that we're following these IEPs that are, you know, contractual obligations. So are we working on this now?
We're addressing this immediately. We've already begun that. Mr. Wood is on that. We're working, getting some guidance from the Department of Education. Just as a side note, there were 18 ELT schools in the state prior to last month. Now there's 10. So we know, there's a couple of districts dropped it altogether, so we know that we're, there's some other communities who are in the same boat, but we're working with the Department of Ed. We're also working with our attorneys to ensure compliance. And then Mr. Wood will be contacting families and going over this. So yes, we're addressing it because we certainly don't want to be out of compliance. We want to make sure our special education students receive the services that they deserve and are legally entitled to in their IEP.
That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Bietzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be back off that, what about families that need, that are at the Salem Wood? What are we doing with families that are going to need extra, like, said, more time? Are there ways, like, are they going to be there? Are they allowed to transfer? Like, is there any stipulations of?
Needed because of their IEP?
Hours? No hours. I'm just talking about just in general. I mean, is there any, like, if families need to, or they just have to go to the after-school program? Is there any?
You mean, they need more time? Okay, not, not a legal obligation. I always come clear on that question. I think we've only had one request to transfer. I haven't, we haven't heard anything on this. We will be looking at having the breakfast program and a drop-off like 30 minutes before school, but it won't be the same hours as we had last year. And we're also looking at, you know, promoting our after-school programs. I think that it would stand to reason that given the loss of this, many families may want to supplement that. We also want to avail our families to some of the programming that's out there through the city, that's free through Department of Recreation, through the Malden Public Library, as well as other options that are available, not just our after-school program.
And do the families all know? Does that want to be all of them? Have they all been notified?
That there's no more ELT? Yes, we did that day, the 15th of June. We put it out on our website. I sent that out as an email. But also, Principal Van Nguyen is also preparing a letter going out to families announcing the time changes and everything else. That will be going out in multiple languages as well.
Appreciate you. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bietzel. Just a couple of questions, observations from the chair. First, regarding the Bar Foundation, I do want to thank Principal Mr. Angelo for providing updates from the conference, beer, I think it was 20 issues, and it was interesting to see the different things that were happening out there and keeping us informed here. Regarding Honeywell, can you let the committee know how things are going with that? Are we right where we want to be? What are we expecting to see over the summer?
I think you'll continue, I believe some of the work they're doing over the summer will be on things that they couldn't necessarily have done during the school year. I think they had to order some lighting for some of the auditoriums that weren't there. I believe, my last meeting with Mr. Ruben from Public Facilities, is run schedule. It's progressing well. The light is great. It's bright, but it's not strained or overpowering. I think if you really want to see it going to any one of the gyms that have a remarkable difference, the classrooms and hallways are much brighter and therefore safer. They'll continue with the schools that haven't been done, and off the top of my head, I'm not sure which one, but I think like some of the hallway lights in the high school, the lighting that they ordered is incorrect because it came with ballast, and I think we're looking for lights that don't have ballast for maintenance purposes, and those will be swapped out. So that was like one of the delays that they had, but they moved on to another school. I don't think that they've, any of the delays they had have caused them to lose time, just caused them to juggle their schedule.
And then following up on that, can you let the committee know some of the summer projects that you're hoping to address between now and the start of the school year? First, I know you're having the stairs in front of the Jenkins Auditorium repaired.
Correct. The stairs in front of the Jenkins, as well as the facade, has had some problems, and that's being addressed. They started that work last week.
And then you mentioned Salem Wood bathrooms, complete overhaul.
Salem Wood bathrooms are going to be refinished this year and done. They've been in dire need of repair. That's probably our second most used building in the district that gets a lot of rentals because of the gym, and there's been a lot of, it's also our largest elementary school, so it's had a, in 20 years, it's, it's time to change them to make it cleaner and more welcoming. The parking lot at the Ferryway and the Salem Wood School are also being done this week and hopefully finished by next Tuesday or Wednesday. We're also looking at a lot of our curriculum aid program, and, you know, we're going to the superintendent's conference next week, and it's also a time where Dr. Chase, Mr. Wood, myself can do some strategic planning going forward, so we're looking at putting a lot of those initiatives out there.
Okay. Final questions around hall rentals. So at some point, we're going to let the users know about some increase?
Yes. So the custodial rent, right? That's a contractual thing.
Okay. Correct. Anybody else? Mr. Iveydino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Otero, you mentioned that you're going to be touring somewhere in the South High School, the C building. Are they going to include the railings, which are diet, need to repair?
I'm not 100% sure. I don't know if that was going to be, if, I'll check.
They're a danger. They're clearly a danger.
That's on the Brunelli Building?
The Brunelli Building's going up.
I'll find out.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Bietzel for?
Um, so Salem Wood, I don't know, with the bathrooms comes the water fountains, because I know at the Linden as well as the Salem Wood, I mean, it's, it's pretty bad. There's plastic dyes over the water fountains, and it's, it's easy water.
Yeah, we ended up having to retrofit them. The ones that we ordered had to be retrofitted in order to fit within the schools, but that's...
Oh, to all the buildings?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think, I don't know if it was all the buildings, definitely the high school.
The Linden is...
Yeah, there was a number that we got through the grant, through the lot we developed.
Yeah, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll get you, I'll get you a status update, okay, for our next meeting or, you know, via email.
Yeah, for the way to upgrade. We need to upgrade.
They have the bottles. Yeah, they're terrific, the ones that have been installed already. We've got a couple that we've installed.
Because that's why I'm...
Sure. Yeah, they look great. They're very, again, even as I count the amount of bottles you save, it's really, it's nice, right? The one I see all the time is across from the Finn Gym, which is a great place for it as well. You know, our kids are going out there, filling up with water, staying hydrated, so it's a health benefit as well.
That's great. Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Spatafor, you get the last word.
All right, great. Really quick one, because we're talking about facilities. An update on the playground at BB. Do we have an update on?
I'm not sure what the work will... I'm not sure when the work will begin. Um, I'd have to double-check. I'm not, I know that we're working with the vendor. Uh, and there's a commitment that we're on with them for, um, I need to double-check. I'll get back to you on that one though.
Do we have a, a completion date where we're looking to have a completed by, I mean, for, or?
I don't want to say because I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I, I need to follow up on that.
Let me do that soon. I'll find out for you, okay? The one thing I can guarantee, the funds are in place.
Right. I, I know we've got the funding and through Playworks.
Yep.
Um, so I, I just don't have the, the dates on the top of my head, but I, I'm not aware that we're not on schedule.
I'll get that. All right, Superintendent. Anybody else then? So thank you, Ms. Batafora. All right, let's go down to, um, item number four. This is Subcommittee Reports and Discussions. Mr. Ayavino, I don't know if you want to just jump to motions and resolutions, or do you want to give a brief overview here?
Well, I think you'd probably miss in the interest of time to jump to motions and resolutions.
The objection to that, Chair has none. So ladies and gentlemen, we're at item number five, motions and resolutions. Uh, let's take up the first one, which is a vote on Unit A the teacher's contract. And speaking on behalf of that will be Mr. Ayavino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, contract has been negotiated. We've had several sessions with, um, our attorney and the representative of the, uh, Mass Teachers Association. Um, a vote was taken by the teachers, I believe, on the eleventh, and they voted to accept the terms of the contract. Uh, Mr. O'Terry, do you have some, uh, more updated information on what those terms are?
Sure. I can give some highlights from the contract. Um, I'll just sort of hit the, the big ones first. Will be the salary pay raises, um, will be two percent for the nineteen twenty school year, two percent for the twenty twenty-one school year, two percent on the first day of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and then a one percent on the ninety-first day of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, that's two, two, and three over a two-year. Um, we also cleaned up a lot of contract language that was outdated. Um, one of the big ones that was done was the, um, early learning center hours. We were out of compliance. It had a class action grievance that, uh, we couldn't address until we opened up the contract. Uh, so that's all solidified. Um, a big thing that, uh, the union agreed to, uh, do, um, and I applaud them for it, was to update the online grading system within ten school days. Uh, I think that would be a great help for our families. Um, many of, if not most of our teachers do this on a regular basis. Um, but I think that now that it is in there, um, I think it's, it's only going to help our, our students and our families as well as our staff. Um, we cleaned up some evaluation language, um, that was, uh, been outdated. Um, and, um, also extended the, uh, leave of absence, uh, for non-birth parents, uh, to use their sick, accrued sick time for up to six weeks. Um, and again, some of this is to fall in line with current legislation, uh, that would be non-discriminatory and inclusive. Um, so we, um, we're happy about this. Also, one of the things that had to be included there is the deletion of the agency fee as a result of the Janus Supreme Court case, uh, a year and a half ago. Um, and, um, I just want to thank, um, our team and the negotiations, both on the MBEA side and on, uh, the school department's side. I think that the contract negotiations were productive, professional, cordial. Um, there was, it was not a tense, uh, time. I think that there was respect, uh, from the outset, and that continued throughout. So, uh, we also, just another thing that came out of this was, um, a joint labor management, uh, committee will be formed uh, to address caseload issues, uh, with some of our staffing, uh, monitor equitable distribution of students and services, uh, service delivery hours, uh, sharing some data, uh, identifying issues and possible solutions, uh, and reviewing and making recommendations relative issues that arrive, uh, from data that collected and analysis of above. So that's something that came up, and they will be reporting out, um, at various times throughout the year.
Okay, and again, that's a three-year contract, effective July?
Effective July first today, uh, through, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
And, and in addition, uh, it's important to note that for the first time in several years, we've added positions as a result of this negotiation. Ten Unit A positions and two positions in Unit B. There were no layoffs in this contract. Uh, we're very happy about. And would also like to add, uh, thanks to the state delegation, Senator Jason Lewis, State Representative Stephen Luttrino, Paul Brodor from Melrose, and Paul Donato from Medford, uh, and working with other la, area legislators that helped to bring additional funding in the school formula, uh, to Malden. So, uh, I would recommend to the committee, uh, that we vote on this contract in a positive way. That would be my motion.
Motion by Mr. Ayavino, seconded by Mr. Foria for purposes of discussion. Um, let me just add on as well. I want to thank Maria Luis from our office, who I think was, uh, thank, was a part of the team. Um, and I also just want to make sure that we also pay homage to, um, Ron Morgan, Chuck Renigan, our financial team, um, for also working with the school department. For example, uh, we are supposed to be, um, funding the cost of the improvements that we're making throughout all of the buildings, with the savings generated from the improvements. Now, in an effort to try to, uh, bolster the school department, uh, we're not going to be requiring those savings to come back to pay off the bond. Rather, we're going to make a concerted effort here to try and do what we can to help the district across the city with, um, the need for more staff. So, as I always say, someday I'm going to do a tullogue when it's all over, of the inside of budgeting. There's nothing quite like it. But as you said, Mr. Ayavino, this was a concerted effort and, um, you know, it was one of the smoothest that I've seen in my time. So hats off to you and everybody else. Uh, so normally, uh, members of the school committee, we would typically take this up at executive session, then come back out and vote on the contract. But, uh, I think Mr. Ayavino summarized along with Superintendent O'Terry, the parameters of this agreement. So if there's no objection, uh, we'd like to act on that now. So Chair, any objection? Because again, technically, we could go into executive session if you wanted to know more, if you had questions about what was outlined by Superintendent O'Terry. Hearing none, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Let's have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Beardsley?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner? Mr. Trummy? Mr. Troyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ayavino?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Batafora?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes. All right, so that carries unanimously. The next order of business is a vote on whether or not to enroll Pope John International students here in the Malden Public Schools. Let's hear from Mr. Ayavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had several meetings on this one issue, and, um, the, I will tell you, the vote of the committee was not to accept. Um, Mr. O'Terry, uh, explained to us the various levels of student visas that were involved. This would create, uh, uh, involvement with the U.S. Department of State, um, yeah, and Homeland Security, which is a, is a dicey situation at best. And we certainly would not want to become involved with the person who was involved with, with, with having to come up with a payment for these students, which is what put Pope John in the bind in the first place. So the vote of the committee, uh, was unanimous. We'd not pursue this.
Uh, any questions on that? So, uh, I see Ms. Batafora. Let's take her question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, no question here, but just to reiterate, um, Mr. Ayavino is also, this school committee has sat here, and we have voted in the past to be a, uh, no school choice. Um, so I think that also made it quite easy for us to vote on this decision. So just to reiterate that.
Good point, Ms. Batafora. Mr. O'Terry?
I just also want to explain a little, uh, when Mr. Ayavino talked about that there'd be a number of government, um, screenings that we'd have to go through. It's a protracted process, and I don't think it would be, it would be complete by September. Um, we would have to commit, um, to going through a training as well as getting all the certifications that are required. It would take several months at, at the minimum, uh, and then we would have to be set up. But I respect the work of the Subcommittee, uh, that felt that this was in line with a no school choice, um, as well.
Okay, so, Mr. Ayavino, are you looking for a vote?
I was.
Not to? Okay, so.
So my motion would be not to, uh, vote not to accept students from Pope John.
Seconded by Ms. Batafora. So, um, a no vote would be to not accept?
A no vote would be not to accept.
Yeah. Everybody clear on that?
Thank you.
Uh, you have a light on. So it's on the table now. Let's have some discussion on it. Ms. Beardsley.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I put out, um, an email to other school committees around the state and asked about, did, this has happened in quite a few districts. And there are districts that did do this to take in money. And so I didn't know if you thought about like the cost, because we obviously are operating on like a super.
Sure. Superintendent?
Um, you, the guidelines are that you are allowed to charge a minimum of what your per pupil expenditure is. And I think twenty-five percent more, I think. Um, but I, I also heard, you know, during the deliberations with the committee about, you know, um, we would be increasing class sizes. They could take seats away from students who are residents here. Um, so I, again, I, I think that some of the districts that have taken them in have also done it to stave off declining enrollments. I know one of our neighboring communities has done that, and they have over fifty, uh, international students, and it has helped. I think that they feel that it's a financial help, but it also kept the enrollments so that they didn't have to lay off staff and continue programming. But we did consider that, but I think that we looked at, um, the whole picture, and it would be a protracted process to do it.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beardsley. So we have the motion. It was seconded by Ms. Batafora. Any other questions? Hearing none? Uh, let's have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Beardsley?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Do you want to vote? Mr. Ayavino, can you say one more time?
No, no.
No is not to accept.
Oh, means not to accept, no.
Ms. Bonner, Mr. Trummy, Mr. Troyo?
No.
Mr. Ayavino?
No.
Ms. Leon?
No.
Mr. McCarty?
No.
Ms. Batafora?
No.
May I ask a question?
No. So that carries unanimously. Next up, decision on staffs, children attending the Malden Public Schools. Mr. Ayavino?
Yeah, speaking to Ms. Wood Nara, who I spoke with just prior to this meeting, has asked that we delay action on this item with the caveat that we will have a definite answer before very long, which she wanted to consult with our school committee attorney.
Any objection?
Someone has to table this, yeah.
Motion to table by Mr. Ayavino, seconded by Mr. Troyo. Let's take a few questions. Ms. Beardsley?
This person doesn't need to have their student start. We don't have another meeting until school life starts.
Well, we may, we may come back for this. Yeah.
Hope we can do a telephone vote. We could consult with our attorney on that.
Yeah. Is anything else, Ms. Beardsley?
Well, I know that, didn't the Subcommittee already vote? The Policy Committee already voted.
Mr. Ayavino?
Policy Committee voted to table this pending further discussion with our school committee attorney. That was Ms., she's a chairperson. This is what, I'm, I'm just speaking on her behalf.
No, that's fine.
All right, let's go to Ms. Batafora.
Sorry, Mr. Ayavino. I'm going to disagree with you as I took the meeting minutes, and I made a motion to reject. It was seconded by Ms. Leon. Um, and that motion passed unanimously in Subcommittee.
All right, okay. All right, let's hold that. Let's go to Ms. Leon.
Um, just, I think we passed, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. That vote was unanimous, but this particular case, we tabled, um, the discussion for further employees, childrens. We, um, we're having a difficult time. Everybody kind of coming together. We have had several meetings on this issue. But for purposes of this one teacher, and I know we all have, I mean, I have it right in front of us, Ms. Kelly from the Forestale. We did vote, um, and it was unanimous vote.
All right, so maybe, Mr. Ayavino, we take up this individual case as discussed by the committee, and then the larger policy, maybe we move to table that, pending whatever the pleasure of the committee.
Once again, I'm speaking on behalf of the committee chair.
Yeah, gotcha. Uh, all right, so what's the pleasure of the committee? Uh, before I turn it over to Ms. Beardsley, if I could, to Ms. Leon, um, what was the rationale? Was it let the time, what, what drove the committee to?
To the decision on Ms. Kelly?
Yeah.
Um, there was a few different issues. Um, it was the time that she has been with Malden Public School. It's also, um, as Ms. Batafora said in the previous vote, our own residents don't have school choice. So we, um, are kind of, there's a few of us that feel, if our own Malden residents don't get school choice, I understand that the teacher's child, but why should they walk in and get whatever school the parent works at or the parent chooses?
Okay. Ms. Beardsley?
Yeah, um, I talked to Mr. Pankey about this, and I've talked to members of the Forestale Committee. This person's, um, husband is, is, is in the military, I believe, and he, this person will no longer be in the house. So that, I think that we've given almost everyone, I've, since I've been here, we've given everyone school choice. And the, the parents and teachers that have been here, we've given their kids entrance. And I think it's, I completely disagree with the decision, so.
Disagree based on?
I disagree. I think this, I think she deserves to have her child.
Right, and if I could, just from the CHS, I understand, uh, this particular one or just in general?
This, this particular one.
But in, but in general, you think the policy has to be revisited?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Now, let me ask a technical question of you, Superintendent O'Terry, um, where we don't have the chair here this evening. Um, yeah, what is the timeline upon which we would have to provide notification?
Uh, school starts on, uh, August twenty-sixth. Kindergarten, I think, will start the following Tuesday, so I'm not sure what that date is. I think it's September third, but don't quote me.
So one option is, uh, if we were to take into account some of the comments made here, we would still have time, um, to notify the, uh, the person questioned. And that family would still have time, right, to make amends, or have they reached out saying, you know, when are you going to let us know? I think there did be time to do that, correct? Okay. All right, well, maybe, uh, let's see what the pleasure of the committee is. Um, you know, one option is we move to table. You know, we come back again. Uh, the other option is we take action on this one and then go back to the larger policy. Um, what's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Beardsley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, devote on this, this particular, um, member, this employee, if they could let their child come to school this year. Point of clarification, every, everyone I've, every, I don't have, you said no to any teacher in the past, educator in the past five years?
But I think that's why we are where we are, right? That's why the committee.
So I'd like to make a.
Well, if I could, uh, I think that's why the committee's been meeting on this, because of what's been happening in prior years. So, you know, I just don't know if, you know, we take action on this now without giving, you know, the committee another opportunity to come back to us with a, a larger policy in hand, you know what I mean?
Right, so, but point of clarification, has anyone been denied in the past five years? So we haven't changed a policy in.
Right.
So we've completely backed, we've gone reverse of what we've done. It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right, Ms. Beardsley, uh, why don't we have our Superintendent weigh in? Superintendent, your experience, what, what's your advising guidance here?
Um, I think that the Subcommittee is looking at this to formulate a policy that they feel would be equitable, um, and sustainable. Um, I know that they were talking about, you know, having some parameters on this, which I think is responsible. Um, I think there's just been some input, uh, from committee members and constituents about, you know, we would be losing seats to non-Malden, uh, students, but, um, this is, the purview of the committee is, you know, certainly why they're examining the policy and, and. committee, that's, you know, certainly why they're examining the policy and trying to come up with one that works for this community. My experience in other districts is some allow this, some don't, I mean, I, I, it's, many districts are getting out of this because of costs that are associated with some of this as well, that they don't want to take on. Others feel that it's a benefit and enhancement to retain some quality staff, so I think that this is certainly something that the committee, I think, is taking with a lot of gravity and being deliberate.
All right, Ms. Leon?
Just to let everybody know, there are so many moving pieces to this. A lot of the requests seem to be, the majority are coming from one school, and it's also a school that a lot of our residents are trying to get into, so we're stuck with that. We also have to think about the fact that if these teachers decide to go elsewhere, that child still does get to stay, so again, to Superintendent O'Teary's point, it's a cost thing.
All right, well, we're missing two members here tonight, I really, my, my advice from the chair, you can do what you want, but it makes sense to me to table, get the committee back together, and then, you know, once we have a night when everybody's here, we can, we can figure this out. I also see where Ms. Beardsley's coming from, but, you know, to me, that would be, that would make the most sense, I think. But we could take some more points of discussion, Ms. Batafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, you know, was not an easy decision, and I have to say, I'm hearing a few things just sitting here that weren't said in the subcommittee meeting, and I don't know if that information was not available to us on that particular teacher that we're discussing, and I think, I think we need a policy in place, because this is why we're in this position, and if, regardless of our position, if, if we don't establish a policy, we could have ten teachers that all of a sudden submit between now and the next policy meeting saying, well, I want my child. However, I, the information of this particular student, teacher's husband serving overseas, I think, could be a case and point of us being proactive as a school system that supports our service members.
Superintendent, actually, I don't believe he's deployed, he's a, a police officer in the community that resides, and he's in the reserves of the guard and could be deployed, you know? Yeah.
He's a cop.
You know, and if I could just to the members, another reason why this really needs to be looked at a little bit further, I mean, we're, you know, we're speculating on the floor, and to me, it's just not right for us to act on it this evening, but, Ms. Beardsley, I see you have your mic on?
I do, I, the school that this child is trying to go to is, is the most under-enrolled school in the district, so I think that, I think that was an incorrect statement that was made. And then, also, we always enroll where there's, there's space historically, and a kid does not stay if the teacher leaves, that's not right. So I, I still plan to make a, look like a vote on it.
All right, well, first, we have a motion to table, that's, we have to dispense with that first, and that was made by, was it you, Mr. Ayavino, or it was seconded by, seconded by Ms. Leon? So let's take care of that. Now, if the motion to table fails, then we're gonna get to a motion. If the motion to table succeeds, then I would ask the committee to get back together, you know, this month sometime, and let's try and see if we can come up with something, you know, as soon, as soon as possible. All right? Let's have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Beardsley?
Yes.
Mr. Boyararo, Mr. Trugby, Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ayavino?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
May I ask something?
Yes.
All right, so that carries six one. So again, what I'll do is I'll contact the chair, you know, to get the policy subcommittee back together. In the meantime, I don't know where this teacher's request stands, Superintendent, but if you can, you know, let her know that we're hoping to reach a decision shortly, but in plenty of time before school starts, we understand that aspect of it, okay?
Correct.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda, we took care of the Marguerite Gonzalez studio, we're now on the Linden Steam Academy governing board. Mr. Froyo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this paper has to do with changing the Linden governing board into a school site council. I'd like to defer to the superintendent to explain a little bit further more fully.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Froyo. At our last meeting in June, I mentioned that, informed the committee of the resignation of the faculty for the Linden Steam Academy governing board, and in that, their collective recommendation would be following to reinstate a school council in compliance with the state statute, include an advisory board of trustees, implement instructional learning teams in the schools, form ad hoc staffing, working groups that will foster innovative practices, and ensure the collective bargaining agreement between the Malden Education Association and the Malden School Committee is adhered to. I thought it was a very thoughtful letter, albeit one that was a bit shocking, and we were at a standstill. I informed the committee that I had made a referral after consulting with the Department of Education and our legal counsel for mediation program, I made a referral to the mediation program at Harvard University, spent a couple hours on the phone with them doing an intake. They informed me that they would take it under advisement, I felt very positive about that, that they'd accept us, and a couple weeks later, they responded that it didn't fit their criteria. Simultaneously, while this was going on, I think the very day that they rejected us, I received a letter from the parent guardian representatives, excuse me, of the Linden Steam Academy, and they offered the following from the Malden School Committee's consideration, that they support the teacher's recommendation with to the school site council in lieu of the Steam Academy governing board, as outlined in the teacher's letter on May 17th. They want to transition the current governing board with parent-teacher representatives currently serving, this goes on the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school years to the school council model. This will allow development of teacher-led instructional learning teams and parent-teacher-led working groups as the parody of representation among teacher and parent guardian groups. We hope that any resigned, excuse me, teachers will be joining the school council, we value their knowledge, commitment to students and their hard work, and believe the school will greatly benefit from their service in the council, and they strongly feel strongly the school's innovation status should be preserved from this transition. Stakeholder feedback received to date shows that the school committee is strongly in favor of the Linden remaining an innovation school. So, with that, after consulting with our attorney, with consulting with the Malden Education Association, we feel that we're in a good spot with this, and that we will be able to work this out going forward. To this, I did put out a statement last week, just, I'd like to read it publicly for the record here, that the Linden Steam Academy will not lose its innovation status, the governing board is in the process of dissolving and becoming a school site council. After doing the same thing for several years, it was the desire of the Linden education community to recalibrate and try something new that they believe will be beneficial to the students. The innovation status of the Linden Steam Academy will remain intact. We will be working with the parents and guardians and the Malden Education Association to create a site council that will be utilizing ad hoc committees, instructional leadership teams, and ensure smooth transition, and continue to preserve the integrity of the innovation school. So with that, I think that I would recommend that the school committee adopt this and go forward with creating a school site council and dissolving the governing board.
All right, let's see if we can get it formally brought before us, so, motion, Mr. Froyo?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, so now it's before us properly, let's take some questions. Ms. Beardsley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I for one have, I'm really disappointed in the way the whole thing went down, and I think that we spent a year, as a parent of Linden student, we spent a year bickering within the, the parents, the teachers, just trying to get equity within that. I, I think there hasn't been any open communication with the parents, we don't even know what the governing board vote was, and then we haven't seen the minutes from the last minute, the minutes from last minute have been very helpful for parents.
Okay, let's hear from the superintendent on why that is.
I believe with their resignation, they stopped, we'll get those minutes out.
All right. Uh, other questions? Ms. Batafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for clarification, that the Linden Steam Academy will have a, a school council similar or the same as our other schools, like BB and Forestale, and they will then follow a school improvement plan?
Correct. Uh, I, I might want to double check on the improvement plan, or if they do the innovation plan in lieu of that.
Because we'll maintain that innovation status by, okay?
I think I, I just need some guidance from the department of that on that one.
Okay. There's a lot of stuff to talk to them about.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Fortunately, they're off the street.
Right. Other questions? Uh, Ms. Beardsley?
Sorry, but, um, just a point of clarification, the, the whole issue this whole year was parent parity, which means that there's the equal amount of parents and the equal amount of staff. That wasn't voted against, I mean, that wasn't ever, i- is this new school council that have parent parity or not? Is the governing board, you know what I mean, like, is this, is this just gonna fall by the wayside or are we gonna address?
Do you know at this point, Superintendent?
I believe that this will address the parent parity.
Okay. Other questions? Uh, just if I might, from the chair, I do want to thank Senara Canatella, who I think was speaking on behalf of the parents, for what I thought was a really professional letter, one that was really well done, put together well. I do want to compliment them on that, because that seems to have gotten us to where we are tonight, which, without that, I'm not sure would have happened. I also wanted to ask you from your end, what is the Malden Education Association saying at this point? Do they too believe a new model is nee-
Yes, that was part of it, I, I do want to also thank the parents of Senara, who I, I thought their letter was thoughtful and reflective, and was one in which they wanted to build bridges rather than enlarge the gulf, and I thought that they listened to what the teachers had, I think the teachers are very, the MEA is very receptive and wants to make this work going forward.
Okay, so let's say the school committee was to vote for this tonight, where do we go from here? What happens next?
I think there'll be some committees formed, ad hoc committees that they had mentioned, I think that the two leaders of each side would start to iron some of these details out and hopefully have this ready for their first meeting in September.
And who would be the point person from within? Would that be you, or?
No, that would be Ms. Jess Walden.
Okay.
And I, I think going forward, I would not be on the governing board, because if it's a site council, I'm not on the other site councils.
Yeah. I think I just want to honor what Senara did in the other half.
Yes, absolutely.
This thing gets off the ground, it just doesn't end up in a-
I, I, I think, I think that both sides, particularly the parents in response to the teachers, took the high road, and I think that that was very well done, in deference and a statement to, we want to make this about our students, and how can we make this school better for our students? So, I want to publicly thank the parent representatives on this, because I think that they took the high road, and I think that the MEA's letter was also thoughtful and forward-thinking.
All right, there you have it, everyone, so let's say you, we have a motion, I think, right? Mr. Froyo made it, who seconded it? Mr. McCarthy. So again, I'll look to our vice chair, so a yes vote would be to dissolve, right? Yeah, everybody clear on that? No vote would be to maintain the vote. Right. So it'd be to dissolve and adopt a site council. Any other questions then? Uh, Ms. Beardsley?
Sorry, one more time.
Yeah, sure.
Also, the instructional leadership teams, when, when you mentioned that, what are you, what are they talking about, the teachers? Do you have any idea?
Superintendent?
Sorry, I should ask for later.
I, I want to get some more clarification on what they actually meant, rather than just stating something, so I'll get some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Anybody else? Hearing none, let's have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Beardsley?
Yes.
Mr. Boyararo, Mr. Trugby, Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ayavino?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
May I ask something?
Yes.
Okay, that carries unanimously, okay. Next up is item number six, adoption of paper straws. So technically under Rob's rules of order, I can't speak for the chair, so let me slide over to the student representative seat, where I wish I could go back to. All right, so, ladies and gentlemen, the last day of school, I think, was June 14th. Credit to our students, they were still working hard, as evidenced by this letter in meeting that happened over at the Forestale School. And let me just read this, it's a short paragraph, but it's from six of our students there who wrote, "Dear Mr. Mayor, we are writing this letter to say we think that instead of using plastic straws, we should use paper straws for school. The plastic used from the straws is being thrown into the oceans, the sea turtles sucking up the straws, making them sick and could cause death. Sea turtles are not the only sea animals being affected. We love how you pick up trash, and we thank you for doing that." I seriously wrote that, I didn't add that. "Pollution is harming animals and sea animals. Each day pollution kills hundreds of nature's creatures. In fact, many animals die each day from littering in plastic, so we hope we consider that this small act could save animals and show that Malden cares." So, we had Omar Hernandez, as well as our superintendent, in attendance with Principal Concanon, and, you know, we heard the students out, we made a very good presentation, and, you know, we thought, after talking after the meeting, is trialing this at the Forestale School as well as the BB School. And the reason for the BB School is, back when we were discussing the single-use plastic bag ordinance, the students there had also suggested that the school district take a look at utilizing paper straws over plastic. So, I think what I was hoping for tonight was just a sense of the committee that we would be willing to support them on trialing it. Now, they suggested going district-wide, but, you know, I think our feeling internally was, you know, let's just try a couple of schools out first before we go all the way. Our food service director, Hernandez, believes that this can all be accomplished from within, meaning that, you know, prices wouldn't have to be raised to cover the cost of paper straws, and that, you know, he would be ready to do this, do this from September. And if the committee was willing to resolve it and support it, what I would like to see is us, you know, joining these students at some point in September, you know, with some kind of mark, you know, signing of something, to let them know that their efforts have paid off. So, now, take any questions about the proposal? Uh, Ms. Beardsley?
As someone who carries around steel straws, like, I'm totally behind this, and I think we should think about, I think it's a good opportunity for us to open the door to other things, this is just a small thing we could be doing, I know that, and I totally commend the students, and I think we should definitely hold hardly behind this, but if we could somehow get them to like, turn this into a bigger picture for like, you know, Malden schools, pre-new deal. You know, like, we need to start to talk about recycling, we need to talk about, you know, reusable things. Like, this is just a really good place to springboard, and I think we should commend these kids, and we should, we should really let them take ownership of maybe getting, you know, propelling it to the other schools.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Ayavino?
Uh, I, I think that's a very laudable statement that Mrs. Beardsley made, and I think it's an indication that these youngsters, they're thinking- that these youngsters, they're thinking, they're thinking very positively, and they need to look, they look to us to validate their, their thinking. And, um, I think that if, if we don't do this, we're making a series error. So I'm all in favor.
Yeah, you know what else was impressive I left out is, you know, this wasn't, um, seventh or eighth graders or generation, you know, since, these were fourth graders, right? All of them were fourth graders. So, um, again, uh, we were pretty moved, and I'm glad to hear, I think, most of you are as well. So, uh, I would just ask someone maybe to make a resolve that we pilot this at the, um, Forestale and BB Schools. Let's get that up first, then we're going to take some additional comments. So, uh, motion by Ms. Beardsley, seconded by Mr. Ayavino. So now it's properly before us, so let's hear from, uh, Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as much as I'm for anything that is going to make our earth a better place, I do have finance questions.
Sure.
And you said Mr. Hernandez looked at these figures, and it would not be a cost increase to the district if we did a pilot program? What are we looking at down the road? So if this pilot program works out, we have a great, um, people, uh, students are really enjoying this change. Have we looked at a cost perspective of the entire district?
Yes. Yes, we have. Um, roughly, I think it was, uh, eight to ten thousand dollars district-wide.
Increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably you take off the cost of the plastic, you know, you net out that.
Okay.
So it might be a little, a little bit less than that, but his feeling, not equivocally, was he could absorb that from within his overall budget.
So we would not see an increase in students' lunches going up?
Yes, because we had the same thinking as you, you know, it was one of our first questions. Because if that was the case, it might have changed, you know, our thought process.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Batafora. Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the ayes have, that carries unanimously. So we'll work with Mr. Hernandez moving forward, Superintendent, and these students. So I'll, I'll notify you at some point when we can either have them in or we'll go see them at a couple of the schools. All right, we're now down at personal privilege. So ladies and gentlemen in attendance, what's going to happen here is we're going to go around and take points of personal privilege from each of the members. We're then going to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining as well as potential litigation. We may come back out and vote on one or both of those items. Then after that, we will move to recess, subject to the call of the chair, meaning that we anticipate there will be another meeting or two over the summer. So let's first take care of personal privilege. Uh, left to right, uh, Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a few points of information. Um, so on Wednesday, July third, um, we have a movie in the park, uh, for both wards one and two, Chalk and Field at Green Street Park. Um, the start time is six thirty PM, and it goes until eleven PM. Then on July fourth, for Ward Two, um, schedule of events, nine AM is the registration. It goes until twelve PM or one o'clock in the afternoon. So we have a bunch of, uh, different events going on that day, and, um, looking forward to seeing everyone down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Let's see, swinging right, um, let's go, Mr. Ayavino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a reminder, this Thursday, the Fourth of July, the Ward Four Committee headed by, uh, Councilor Ryan Hummeli will be hosting festivities between the hours of nine and one, nine AM to one PM, at Corte Mallee Park. That's the facility next door to the, uh, pool, swimming pool on Mount Now. I look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayavino. Mr. Froyo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July fourth, on Thursday, at eight forty-five, will be the Linden, Linden, um, Fourth of July Celebration sponsored by Councilor JD and Sika. That's at eight forty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first, I'd like to welcome Dr. Murphy to the BB School as principal, July first, day one. I'm not saying that because my kids go there. Um, but we, we look forward to having you in the school. Um, also, a Title One event, um, will be Monday, July eighth, at six PM at the BB School. Uh, they're going to talk about the importance of reading during the summer, as long, as well as having some pizza, and, um, a performance of Cleo's Egyptian Tale by the Little Wet Wagon Troop. And bring your reading log, that's your ticket. I'd like to also thank the BB PTO that has served us over the past few years, including Colleen Lashane, Bonnie Littlejohn, Dawn O'Toole, Karen Bogan. Um, you guys have been amazing. I'd also like to, um, congratulate our new PTO board that will be serving two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, that includes Jen Kodeer, Isabel Dela Cruz, Carrie Allo, if I said that right? Um, and Laurie Carver. Um, and then lastly, uh, Ward Three, our July Fourth celebrations will be taking part, part at Amherst Park, uh, this Thursday, nine AM. Did you hear hosted by Councilor John Mathis?
Ms. Beardsley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Ward Five is having their annual Independence Day celebration at the Forestale School this Thursday, uh, from nine to four. Come join Councilor Murphy and myself, um, for a good time. Um, I also wanted to, um, just, you know, welcome and actually give applause to Mr. Garcia, who's a main candidate when we are introducing. I for one, I for one, I'm really, really happy that, um, that you're joining us. Thank you. Uh, and then I wanted to thank Ward Five, um, for giving me the honor of representing me, uh, for representing them the past four years. It's a sadness I announce I'm not running for reelection in the fall. Uh, my career and family are going to require more of my time in the future, and I'm not able to serve you to the best of my ability. Uh, I joined the school committee to look to bring educational equity to all students involved in. And as I'm proud that we've done a lot and accomplished a lot together, uh, I have six more months to attempt to do some of the items that I've, and I look forward to working hard, as I always have with you and on your behalf. Um, students like my children and their families need people who are committed both of their time and effort to serve in the school committee for all students. I look forward to finding more ways to serve our students and stay involved in the future.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Uh, let me be the first to welcome Ms. Littlejohn and Ms. O'Toole to the Malden High School Student Council. Did, did I, uh?
Yay.
I know exactly. I know exactly. Um, so, uh, the other thing is, we just got a note that the railings will be addressed as part of the Jenkins Artory, yeah. And then regarding the fountains, Ms. Beardsley? Um, so Salemwood will be done in the next two weeks, and the high school, uh, fountains are being installed this week. Uh, the challenge there is we had to break out some concrete, but, um, they'll be done by the time school starts. Uh, so now, let's find out about executive session. So we have a motion by Mr. Ayavino, or seconded by Ms. Batafora. Let's have the clerk call the roll to go into executive session.
Ms. Beardsley?
Yeah.
Mr. Fronaro, Mr. Trugby, Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ayavino?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
May I question?
Yes.
I declare unanimously, we're now going to executive session.